We're live.
Okay, we're live.
All right.
Thanks, Jamie.
I'd like to open the village council budget work session. Today's March 9, 2021. I showed the time at 5:35. I show we also have a full form of village council members. So first off, we have, we need a motion to consider allowing council members to participate remotely. And I have three of them participating remotely today.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I assume.
Jamie, where are you and why did you just have a mask on?
I'm in hiding.
Where are you and why your mask on? I thought you had a stunt double for a minute.
No.
All right, we're not seeing any, we don't got any videos. So there they are. It's like, guess where Waldo is? Where's Waldo? Where's Jamie?
I'll never tell.
Hey, I saw a big.
He's not gonna tell us where he is.
No, wait, I know where he is. You're in an RV because I saw an RV in front of your house.
He snuck out. Ah, you dirty dog.
Am I correct? Am I correct?
You are correct.
There you go. So are you, I sure hope you're not driving.
I'm riding down the road.
That was a nice, nice RV I saw the other day in front of your house, so. And I know RVs well. I spent a lot of time in them a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Are you ready to move?
They need to adopt the agenda. Okay, first off, we have to adopt the agenda as presented. Need a motion? All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
You gotta do this so moving because you're in the office.
Huh?
What?
Andy, you need to do this so moving since you're in the office.
I tried, but you stepped on me.
Sorry.
We have two pictures, we have two pictures in camp. One's enough.
How did you move the?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and get started on the CIP. This is basically the same CIP that y'all saw at the retreat with the changes that were made for the discussion. So we'll just kind of go over everything that we went over in the retreat. Can everybody hear me okay online?
Yeah.
I can hear you back there.
Yeah. We got a necko. Jamie, uh.
So first you'll see on your screen is the cover sheet. This basically has all of the projects on it for the entire, for all of the departments. We'll go ahead and start with the parks and rec. For next year fiscal year 21, 22, you see the trailer and storage building at $5,000. And that's primarily just for planning purposes. We wanted to put in a, I think it was a two or three bay storage unit, and that's scheduled for next year at $30,000.
Yeah, okay.
The lakeside corridor, there were some changes made to that based off the discussion in the retreat. And we basically took out the temporary screening for the temporary bathrooms. And we also took out the second tier of bathrooms at that lakeside corridor. So we only have $10,000 for next year, which is primarily landscaping around the picnic shelter with some handicap slab for parking, it looks like. I thought that was already there.
So just to be clear, we're working off of the new one. This one that you gave us, has it been updated?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, we do not have handicap access down at the, down at that end.
So that's what that $10,000 is for, grading and landscaping in that handicap parking spot at the picnic shelter. We did remove the bathrooms. We did have $60,000, I think, for next year. We did remove that. Park trail enhancements, that is.
Actually, I think we ought to have Kim confirm whether we have handicap parking at the picnic shelter.
Can you go by there and take a look?
Have you walked back there yet and seen our pavilion?
The park trail enhancements was basically to provide more walkable areas, basically making the trailhead accessible at Marvin Eater Park. Because currently the picnic shelter park trail does not connect to the existing trail. So you wanted to add some more trail space, and it's a total of 1,800 linear feet. So that's what that $15,000 is. The fitness trail, he's discussed with you guys. And that would be something that's primarily a sponsorship driven project. And we'll talk about that in more detail when we get to the budget. I have budgeted $10,000 in revenue for that project, but you're still seeing it here for an expenditure. It still would be built even if you didn't get the, the revenue based off of how we got everything presented now. So for a total of $40,000 is the capital improvement projects being requested for Parks and Rec next year, which we have fully funded in the budget that you'll see after this discussion. Any questions on any of that?
Yeah, Christina, sorry. So there'll be basically three projects that get started this year and a lakeside corridor, the park trail enhancement, the fitness trail. And the trailer and storage is just, we're putting it in the savings account for that for the next year.
No, more than likely, we'll have to get engineered, drawn plans. So that's what we're gonna do this year for that is go ahead and get the plans drawn up and permitted and that sort of thing, which we anticipate to be around $5,000.
$5,000 for adding a base?
Oh, okay, so that's not, okay, I got it. But the other three are actual projects that will get done this year.
Yes.
So we can, so whatever we don't use for the planning phase, we can roll into construction?
We won't roll it into construction. It'll roll back into fund balance.
Okay.
So it's not like a, it's not a capital project. So if we don't use it, it just goes back into fund balance. We can appropriate it next year, but it won't be in that fund. It doesn't just automatically roll over.
Okay, so we can pull it back out and then put it in the fund. That's fine, just, that's fine.
When we get to the budget, there's a portion of a fund balance appropriation that we're doing for roads. And you'll, I can show you an example of how that works for next year. So you'll see it. Does that answer everyone's questions for Parks and Rec? Okay. Uh, the Greenways master plan, so per the discussion at the retreat, you basically had, if you turn to page 11 of your CIP. Everybody there? Okay, so you'll see Saddle Avenue to Newtown is listed at $85,000. That was the start of the savings account that we were gonna do, basically. And then you'll see the preserve trail at $50,000, which was revised based off of the discussions we had at the retreat. So there's a total of 135 being requested. We've got some money in our savings account now for the capital, I'm sorry, not the savings. It's a capital project for Greenways. And so we're basically gonna keep that money in there, which is accounts for the $85,000. And what we'll do is we'll take that money out for the 50,000 preserve.
Hey Christina, Derek got like Berber numbers for that?
He matched up the linear footage contract with the Tullamore, I believe it was. So he just matched up those numbers and he actually came in a little bit less than that. I think it was more like 44,000, but we just went ahead and put 50, just, just in case.
Okay. Do, do we need to possibly, um, take into consideration that we may get an easement? And as we're doing that internal trail, we may want to add that?
But wouldn't that connect, that easement, if we did get that easement, that would eliminate going all the way to Saddle, wouldn't it? Or are we still planning to go to Saddle?
It's still, the internal trails stay the same. It would just be the connector into, into Sbrook, which I'm not sure what the linear footage to that is. And we also have to include a bridge, so that could be as much as the rest of the trail.
But I, yes, it could, Andy, and that's why I'm saying I would, I would, if we're doing that internal trail and, and we get the easement, I think that person wants that to be connected sooner than later. So if we get it, I think we need to have it budgeted or have money in there that if we get the easement, then we can do the project. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that was one of the questions he did ask me is, is how soon are we talking? And I, and I said, speaking for myself, I would prioritize that if that's something that you were interested in doing.
Right, Rohit, have you talked to him?
Yes, we had a meeting at his property and we talked about different, you know, constraints. And he's generally in favor of the project. He wants it to happen like Mayor said, sooner than later. And we're looking at that 350 feet and about a 10-foot span of a bridge to cross the creek.
Is that, well.
Do we have, do we have any idea how much that would cost? Maybe not the bridge, but the 350 foot, whatever that year.
Yeah, sure, um.
Prices.
Give me a second. Derek said he could do it as little as like $8 a linear foot, so that'd be $3,000. And then the bridge might be another couple thousand dollars, or maybe five.
Well, and before we put a length on that bridge, is that just spanning the little bit of water that's in the creek right now? Or does that get up high enough to accommodate torrential rains in a flooding situation that could wash the bridge out?
Yeah, if you're talking about that, it might be, it's still like maybe 12 or 13 feet, maybe 15, but I know that bridge costs increase exponentially with length, so.
So those bridges are gonna cost you probably around $50 a square foot. So times.
Let's say five foot wide by 15.
Maybe more than that right now.
When you met with him, I thought I was gonna be included in that meeting, so when did, when did you guys meet?
We met yesterday, maybe?
Okay.
Was today Tuesday? Yeah, we met yesterday.
Did he talk about like materials as far as, did we show them, him what it could potentially look like where it is?
Yes, yes, we showed him that it would be like a crushed concrete, so it would not wash out as easily as gravel.
He's got a fairly decent slope there too, doesn't he?
Yeah, he does.
So then we're gonna have to, you're gonna have to add linear footage to that trail. You're gonna add another 100 linear feet because from what they, they have to do is they're gonna have to meander that down that slope so that it won't wash. There's a certain grade that they like to stay at so that, so that the water doesn't pick up speed and it doesn't erode. So I would add at least another 100 foot to that.
So.
Without looking at it, I would say at least that, just as a ballpark.
Sure.
Again, and then we can discuss it as we get to that subject, but from a budgetary standpoint, it's probably gonna be more. And we may want to consider moving
Okay, so.
one of those or adding to that if that's the case, that if, if he gives us a go, we would want to be prepared in '21, '22 for that, don't you think?
Yeah.
And I'm asking the council that, would you guys be all right with that? To prioritize that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I would say, I would take some of that $85,000 down depending on how much that bridge is gonna cost and just appropriate.
So I think we're under 10?
Yeah, we're about at 10.
So if we, so if we appropriate $10,000 to that project, I think we will probably be safe. Not sure exactly where we are with material costs right now, but if this doesn't happen for six to nine months, I see materials coming down. They're caught up with production, but the material costs are still high because the demand is still pretty high. Once the demand tapers off, the pricing will come back down a little bit. So I'm hoping in six to nine months, we'll have a little bit cheaper.
But either way, I could probably reach out to him, see where he's at and find, and let him know that, hey, council's on board with, if you give us the go, we're likely to do this in the next year.
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
So to answer your question.
That would be, that would be amazing, like really good.
So to answer your question, it's not budgeted, um, in this number, we can bump this 50 up to 60, but this is gonna come out of the capital project fund anyways. So the numbers don't have to be actual specific for this purpose in this one. What we'll end up doing is just whatever, that money is budgeted in that capital project fund. So as long as we have it spent on the capital project for Greenways and trails, we can appropriate whatever's needed there.
Okay.
It would just reduce the amount that we kept in there for the $85,000 match is what it boils down to.
However you want to do it, Christina, whatever makes sense, but we, we know that that's, we probably need to look at another 10 for that project just for planning purposes.
I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Comes a good amount.
All right, well, we can just go ahead and amend that section for, for 60, and we'll just plan on spending 60 for the preserve trail.
Okay.
Moving on to admin, the only thing, it's, I'll go back to the first page, the very first page, sorry. The only thing that we've got budgeted there is the Village Hall project, and I've got an estimated 1 million there. Remember, we do have about 800,000 in our savings account now reserved for the Village Hall project. So we just put that number in expecting to potentially borrow a million dollars. And that's the only project we have for admin for next year. We did make some revisions based off of future years, the conversation we had at the budget retreat, and that was based around the pedestrian refuges. Y'all wanted to move that number up a little bit. And then also planning for farmer's market and amphitheater. We did put 10,000 in for planning purposes for that. Again, that's several, that's two years down the road, but it's in there per the request of council at the retreat. And then the next thing is the, any questions on that? Admin, okay. The next thing is road resurfacing plan. And if you want to flip to page 31.
31?
31. You'll see the fog seal plan that we've got for the engineered assessments that we had. Those pages looked like this, if you remember. Can they see that?
Barely.
Okay. Uh, those are the AMT surveys. Those numbers are listed in 2022.
So we're doing the, the Greenway as part of that in 2022?
Yes, yep. So not next year, but the next year. So the 2021, 2022 would be next year. So the Greenways wouldn't be in until next, the next year that follows.
From May of next, physically next year after May.
It would be July 1 of 2022, yeah. 51. All right, that's not, okay, thanks. So next year, we just have the roundabout share cost, which is estimated at 115. That's not including the 105 that we are gonna discuss tonight. That's the other 115 that we're expecting to have to pay out. I've also estimated some overruns in there for, for a couple of years down the road. So we've got that in there for planning purposes as well. And that's really it from a capital improvement plan standpoint. Next year, you have a total of 1.29 million dollars being requested. And we have fully funded most of that. The Greenways capital funds, you know, we're gonna take a portion of that out based off of our discussions that we just had here. And we don't have the full 135 to, to put away, but we can get an update on those numbers if you're interested. But for the most part, the other Parks and Rec and admin and POW bill dollars have been accounted for in the budget. And for purposes of the capital improvement plan, we're only focused on next year, 2021, 22. So we were asking for approval of the CIP if y'all are interested in approving it tonight.
Kim says yes.
I'm getting a thumbs up on screen.
Speak, we need to hear from you rather than thumbs up.
I'm fine, we're.
I'm sorry, you're on mute, Kim.
No, I'm not.
You were.
I'm not now, I'm good, that works for me.
Yeah, that works for me too.
All right.
Jamie, you're good?
Yep, that works for me.
Okay.
So do you want a motion now?
Okay, so we need a motion for that?
Like to make a motion to approve the capital improvement plan as presented?
Further, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Did I do okay, Kim?
You did great, Andy. You did great, you sounded just like me.
No, no.
So just in case y'all have any questions later about this plan, this is not a binding document. This is really just for budgeting purposes so that we as staff know what to prepare for. So if you ever get any questions about the 450,000 for the Village Center District and the 300,000, it's a total of 900 across five years. It is really just for planning purposes. It is not an actual budget and we're putting dollars to an account. It's planning purposes only.
In case someone tries to accuse us of wrongdoing.
Putting stuff in that we don't even know we're doing yet. Right.
Don't happen.
Will get problems.
Okay.
So pending no questions, we'll move into the budget.
Goodbye.
Ask her where this document is or how she already showed you. Hey, Jamie, can you come tell Rohit where the budget is so we can pull it up on the screen?
Two at a time.
Okay, y'all copy of this, all right.
This?
Yeah.
Do I have that, Christina?
You do not.
Can you open that 95? Just a little bit so I can see the titles?
Thanks.
Because it's gonna be, do you want it without columns or what?
Uh, just do it without, yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Thanks, Jamie.
I'll do what I can.
And you guys have court copies, right?
Yes. And for those of y'all that are watching that don't have it, we'll make sure you get them in your mailbox.
Okay.
At Village Hall.
Just curious, since we have so many people out, can we order in food or? Get some steaks in here, barbecue?
I agree.
Just kidding. For the record. Some are in the comfort of their RVs, I guess.
All right. You good, Rohit?
Jamie, he's just jealous. He's just jealous.
What do we need to be showing?
Just go to the top and I'm just gonna work my way down. You don't need to do anything.
I can figure out a way.
Okay. Okay, so I passed around a sheet that is the revenue neutral estimates as of now. I know that you guys sitting at home don't, don't have this in front of you, and this number is not exact yet. So this is really just preliminary numbers that we've put together for that revenue neutral purpose. And if you recall, what the revenue neutral means is basically we're in a revaluation year. So property values are expected to go up and we are required by law to, to publish what that revenue neutral rate would be, meaning that taxes could go up or down based off of the valuation. And we would have to publish what that rate is for the revenue to stay the same.
Have you guys all got your evaluations yet? It's a shocker.
Yeah.
I just will tell you.
Yes.
Mine, mine went up over $300,000.
So we're, we're seeing rates of 25% to 26% increase is, is what Union County is estimating for Marvin. Now, some may be more, some may be less.
Mine was over 100%. And I just bought it in September, the house I just bought.
Yeah, it's, I would appeal that.
Yeah, I am, because it's double what I paid for.
So we'll get a copy of the, the revenue neutral numbers once we get the actual numbers back from the county. I just want to show you kind of what it was gonna look like. So we're really not doing anything with that, just so you see what it looks like. Based off of our projections, we have evaluation.
Christina?
Yes.
I'm sorry, where, where am I supposed to be looking to see?
You don't, you don't have it, you don't have it.
I know, but is it not up on the screen?
No, it's not.
Oh.
It's a sheet that looks like this.
Okay, that's fine, I'll, I'll look at it. I gotta come in tomorrow, I'll run it tomorrow.
The numbers aren't correct, so we're just waiting. No, 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 it's fine.
You're fine?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So pull the budget back up. Please. All right, so moving into the avalerum, we've got a proposed 793,000 for property taxes. And this is a, I think it's a, yeah, it's estimated a 10% growth. And so we did this before we actually got numbers back from the county. We could actually increase this number if we don't go down on the tax rate some. But if we only go up a certain portion, we've only estimated 10% growth, not 26%. So with that in mind, we have the 793,000. You can go down the list unrestricted. We actually kept that to about the same of what we budgeted last year, even though we do expect to receive a little bit more on that. We're not too sure about some of the sales tax and beer and wine associated with COVID. So we wanted to kind of keep some of that low estimates. It could come back more than that. Restricted is your POW bill funds. We have seen an increase in that since we've taken over roads. We have accounted for that slight increase of the 147,000. Permits and fees, these are gonna be your zoning permits and your development fees. That number is estimated around 56,000. Sales and service is estimated at 15,000. Those are gonna be your barn rentals, your parking passes. I'm sorry, parking passes are obsolete, but your professional passes, community gardens, those sort of things. Investment earning is at 2,000. Miscellaneous is at 30,000, and we'll get to that number in just a second. You see the debt proceeds here of 1.8 million dollars. This is the total max amount of money that we are expected to borrow for Village Hall. It could be less than that, it could be, it could be less than that. It's not gonna be any more than that. But you'll see that number at the very bottom of the screen goes out into a capital transfer. So that number equals each other. It doesn't matter if it's 1 million or 1.8, that number is the same. So it's just listed there for budget purposes for the maximum amount that we expect to borrow. Fund balance appropriation, you'll see 115,000 there. We have not used fund balance to appropriate any, we have not used that recently in the last several years to balance our budget. However, this is solely to pay for the roundabout agreement, and this is taken strictly from the POW bill reserve. So it's not coming from our unrestricted POW bill, I'm sorry, it's not coming from our unrestricted fund balance. It's coming straight from reserve POW bill. And you'll see that number reflective in the transportation budget when we get to that part. So we have a total of 3.4 million dollars in revenue. You'll see the breakdowns of all the different expenditures per department, and we'll go over these in detail. So I'm not gonna go over the highlighted numbers. We put in $15,000 in contingency. We usually put in around 50, but with the budget being so tight this year based off of just doing 10%, we did decrease that slightly. The budget was tight based off of the new expenditures expected for Village Hall. Any questions on the front sheet?
Debt proceeds are 1/8.
And if that number changes, we'll just make the, the in and out be the same. So if it comes in at 1.4, we'll do debt proceeds at 1.4 and into the capital at 1.4.
So if we're using POW bill reserves for the road here, which makes sense to do, that's gonna deplete our POW bill road maintenance monies down the road.
It is.
Which we're gonna have to somehow get back into the roads to keep them in shape, right? Or do you think we'll be able to stomach that?
Jamie, if, if you're listening, can you print out that POW bill tracking sheet that we've got? Can you print a couple of copies and then we'll go over that in detail when we get to the transportation? I'm sure she heard me.
Yeah.
So if we can hold that, we'll get to that.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just curious on how that's gonna affect that because obviously we're pulling it from Peter to Village Hall, so.
Any other questions on the cover sheet? You'll see down at the bottom where it says net budget zero, that means the budget is completely balanced. So go over to the revenue tab. This is a breakdown of. This is a breakdown of all the different revenues that we just mentioned. I wanted to highlight the miscellaneous section.
Where is that?
Down here.
Yeah, so we'll see $15,000 in traffic calming devices. Click on... Let me see what that says. I don't know what.
It's the next page, John, here.
What's here?
Yep.
Okay, debt comment needs to come out. Never mind, I see it. The $30,000 that's listed in miscellaneous is gonna be $15,000 for traffic calming devices. That's if any neighborhoods want to have traffic calming devices, speed tables, that sort of thing, put into their neighborhoods, they would give us the money and then we would turn around and pay it out. So you'll see the $15,000 as an expenditure, thanks, in your PAO bill transportation. I'm sorry, not PAO bill, in your transportation budget when we get to that part. You'll also see $15,000 there for the sponsorship of the Disc Off or Fitness Trail. So that's where that $30,000 is expected to come from. Any questions on the total revenue? The second pages.
Oh, he's not on the second page up there.
Yeah, he is. He scrolled down.
Oh. It's down near the bottom.
It's down right here. Which says miscellaneous. Right here, Jen.
Okay.
Basically, there's $30,000 there and that's money that we're expecting to get from third parties if it happens.
Okay.
Put the page to general government. You'll see all your general government salaries listed there at the top. Those are gonna be your manager, your clerk, your finance folks. Listed all there. Merit bonuses put in at 4%. Then you'll have your stipends for council members and mayor. You also have your stipends for your boards. We've got an estimated 15% increase in health insurance. We have not got numbers back yet from our provider, but we are just expecting a 15% increase. This number could be more, it could be less. We also have the life insurance, short-term disability. Again, we've anticipated a 15% increase there as well. The retirement has actually gone up this year per the local government ligers and that number is listed here. It's at 11.25%. This is a requirement for all employees that have over 1,000 hours. You have your FICA related benefits there. You also have your unemployment. Direct deposit fees, background fees. Legal pretty much remained the same. We did do a slight increase on that. Accounting services. This is something new. We do have a CPA contract in here that we will talk about probably at one of the next meetings, but as you know, our finance director will be leaving for health reasons sometime around July, August and expected to be out for a couple of months. And we need someone to be on retainer there for us to hold our hand through the audit process. So that's what that's listed there for. And to also help with monthly checks and overview of everything every month. The next thing is the auditor, which is expected to go up just slightly based off of our three-year contract with them. That's listed here. The code of ordinances to maintain that is listed. That's with our new codification vendor. We did do a slight increase in the computer consultant for next year just based off of historical trends and just the number of computer issues that we've been having and also maybe some of setup with Village Hall, but not completely all of it. The new Village Hall. We also removed tax bill printing because we're gonna contract out with the county, so that number is decreased slightly, if you'll notice. And then we... We did decrease... Well, it's listed somewhere else. Okay, we'll talk about that when we get there. We did not put any transcription services in here because we haven't been using it. And then we have the county contract for tax collection in here at $11,000. Membership dues, pretty standard. Those are basically the same. And then we have our election costs with Union County estimated at $6,000. Any questions on that page? We're still not done with general government, but on that page, any questions? Okay, moving on to... If y'all here wanna flip your page, you'll see operating expenditures at the top. Training and travel, pretty much the same. Books, the same. We did put in another $5,000 for training for board members and/or, you know, a retreat liaison as we did in previous years. If that's not something desired, we can actually move that around somewhere. We have our gifts in there. Property and liability insurance, we did estimate a 10% increase. It could be more, it could be less. We don't have actual numbers yet on that. I do have a $10,000 administrative discretion in here. This is money that we use throughout the year when things pop up and we just appropriate it from here. We do have to do a budget amendment for it, but just it's kind of like a place to hold money if we need it. Bank fees, copier fees. Listed there. Nothing changed too much. Meals and mileage. Mileage has gone down slightly because we'll have a vehicle next year and we expect a small reduction in that. Not much. Postage. All that stuff's pretty much the same. Here, you'll see some changes in software because we are slowly gonna migrate out of the tax database software. We do have to maintain it somewhat next year for purposes of looking up old accounts, but that will at some point eventually all go away, so that's been reduced slightly from last year. We also have all your basics, your office supplies, telephone, website, all that stuff. Listed there. Nothing's really changed much on that. Then you get into the next column, which is occupancy. We've got rent for nine months here where we're at now and then we've got the debt service payment of $65,000. That number could be slightly higher, it could be slightly lower depending on what the bids come back at. This $65,000 was based off of, I wanna say, about $850,000 loan. Again, we were able to fully absorb that into our operating budget without significant changes, so that's a really big feat for us.
How long is the term?
We've got it estimated at 20 years.
So it's a monthly bill, but that's a yearly total, right?
Yes, yep. I don't know if the bill will be monthly. We just have to wait and see what our bid, RFPs come back at.
So we could pay it annually in balance?
Yeah.
It's less interest that way.
Oh, is it? Okay.
But if you pay it at the beginning of the year, you don't accrue that interest for the months throughout the year, so you would have less interest that way if they had allowed it.
So that number may change based off of what the bids come back at because we're only gonna borrow what we need, so it could be more, it could be less. If it comes back more, then we'll obviously have to move some numbers around. We'll have to maybe pull the administrator discretion funding down and/or not... Well, and/or keep the tax rate the same. Moving on, we do have an increase in electricity that's associated with being in a bigger facility and that is the same for gas as well and lawn service and office cleaning. We did bump those up pretty significantly based off of us being in a new space.
Even though we won't be in till... When's the move-in date estimated?
It... Well, it's all... It's gonna depend on when the vendor finishes, but we've got in here estimated move-in, I think, March. Yeah.
Perfection.
Yeah. Yeah, and we went up... I mean, I say significant, but just for example, office cleaning, we went up $2,500. So if we don't use it, it'll just go back into fund balance. We did put in our typical computer replacements. One thing that we have not accounted for in this budget and/or any of the Village Hall numbers is computer, audiovisual, security, furniture, any of that stuff for the new Village Hall. So that is something that we will have to talk about when we get the bids back and how we're gonna pay for that. Any questions on general government? Because I'm done with that tab. Okay, moving on to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, you have your planning salaries listed there. Merit bonus, 4%. All the health insurance and all the benefits associated therein. 15% increase. You also have your engineer listed at $77,000. The reason there's such a big hike in this is because what we have seen over the course of the last several years is we are getting a lot more money back from our developments. Our engineer, like, reviews. So as you've done continuous budget amendments to put more money into this line item, you're actually receiving more money in revenues as well. So if you look back at your revenue tab... Trying to see what line item it is.
Development fees, 25?
Yeah, development fees. The development fees, we estimated actual for this year is $17,000. We have increased that significantly next year because we do anticipate more development fees next year, so that's why that number is so high. Rohit has requested an array of things. $60,000 for a planning assistant contract, which is what we've got currently right now. I think that's based off of 20 hours a week. He's also requested $5,000 for a loop trail. Yeah. What is that for the planning?
Which one?
The Marvin Loop Trail. That was for the plans, wasn't it?
Which line item are we on?
Right there. Right there.
Right here?
No, 71. $5,000 Marvin Loop Trail. You were talking about some plans for that.
Might be engineering plans for that.
Yeah, for that and also Joe Carr. And then your brick match, which is something that we've already committed to. So those are all the items that Rohit has requested. Urban Forester, we have put in an increase there for potentially a new contract. Code enforcement, we did recently award a contract to COG for that, so you'll see the $11,000 listed for next year there. Training, travel, books, all that stuff remains the same, basically. We do have a slight increase in recording fees associated with potential annexations that we may have. And other than that, all the minor stuff stays the same. Any questions on planning and zoning? Any here? Okay.
I do... Sorry. I mean, I'd just like to know, like, what this... What Rohit... I don't know what the 5K Marvin Loop Trail... I don't know what that stuff is. Like, what do you wanna do with it?
I think it's not supposed to be labeled like that. What I was requesting is traffic impact analysis for the Heritage District. And I think I asked for 15.
So I've got the notes from our meeting. Let's see. Civil engineer, ARCO, Granite SCU.
Oh, that's right.
Software, intent, 15 for code enforcement. Rohit, the brick grant. This must have been stuff that we discussed. I have $2,500 for Joe Carr, Marvin.
That's in there?
Yeah.
We have to match that study.
And, yeah, so that's the $2,500.
Right, but...
I think that... I didn't take a note on that, but I thought that was for engineering plans. I mean, we can change it live right now for whatever it's actually for. What's the $5,000 for?
This is supposed to be for... This is supposed to be 15K for a traffic impact analysis.
Okay, and that's not... We can't fund that unless we cut something else, so...
Okay, well, we have to come back to that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't you guys figure that out and we'll talk about it next time.
Okay.
But that needs to get cleaned up and figured out what the actions supposed to be.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to public safety. Do you remember what that was for?
Consultant assistance with preparing the Marvin Loop Trail 5K.
Thanks, Jamie.
Okay, thanks.
We'll clean that up.
Oh, I see. Okay. So this just didn't get on... This didn't make it into the budget, I guess?
All right, we've just... We've got nine minutes to get through this, so you guys can clean up that later.
So, public safety. Two officers. We're expecting a 2.1% increase. We have received a letter already. And that's in here. We also have the equipment rental for the roundabout and we have 12 months of off-duty. Any questions there? Okay, moving on.
Can we send that spreadsheet directly to Union County and all those surrounding municipalities?
We can.
You take it to a woman meeting with us this month? Who wants to?
Any of us?
Okay, moving on to transportation. So if you recall when we...
That's where the 15K is.
If you recall, whenever we discussed the revenue of PAO bill, the number was $147,000 plus the $115 that we're appropriating from fund balance. So that's your total numbers here. Let me add this up real quick. All right, so you've got no salary and benefits here. You've got $40,000 for pedestrian sidewalk, pedestrian crosswalk at Joe Carr and Wheatfield, which was what we had recently estimated from our engineer. We still have the $2,500 in for the roundabout lakes. We've got $20,000 estimated for road repair and maintenance. $15,000 of that was Rohit's request to do a traffic impact analysis of the Marvin Heritage District.
Yeah, sorry about that. That's where that went.
And then we have road repair and maintenance of $15,000 for street signs, potholes and various things. You've got a total of $35,000 that's estimated in excess PAO bill funds that we will have to push over and reserve, so that's what that money's for. Then you've got $20,000 for emergency repair and/or traffic calming. If you remember, and when we were talking about revenues, I had budgeted $15,000 in revenues for traffic calming, so basically 15 of this 20 is estimated of revenue. Five of that would be emergency repair. $115 is for the roundabout agreement match. And it does have a note here, fund balance appropriation of $115. And then we have our mowing contract and then our CRTPO grant match. The question was posed earlier about PAO bill and how we're projecting that out for the next several years. I know y'all don't have this at home, but we basically projected out the next 10 years of revenue and expenditures for PAO bill, which is what we've got in front of us. We saw this at the retreat, if you recall, but in next year, we're anticipating on having a total of $166,000 in revenue. And what's already currently there, we currently have $18,000 that will roll forward. We anticipate $105,000 of appropriation that we're gonna talk about tonight, if you're following this. You see that?
Can I ask a question about... Can you go up on this some? Can I, can I ask a question about, if you, can you go up on this some? Sorry, okay. So if we're going up on what we talked about last night about the Marvin Heritage, there's not going to be any more money, do we really need to be appropriating fifteen K for traffic impact until we know what we're actually going to be there?
That's a good point.
And, and, and is it our responsibility or the developers' responsibility? I mean, this is what we went round and round about last night. So I think we're probably going to have that conversation later. So I would just highlight that and maybe come back to that because I just don't know if, you know, we need to be spending more money on it.
Okay, and that's a good question because I think typically when we have developments like this and they're going to pose traffic concerns, we require the developers to pay for that traffic impact analysis. So that's a, a good point.
But in the absence of a, one big developer, someone has to do that.
Okay, so again, going back to the Pell Bill, the Pell Bill sheet, just so you can kind of see how it's projected out. We do, if you, I don't know where it's at, Jamie would have to tell you where it's at.
Okay.
Jamie, if you can come tell Rohit where this, this is that we're looking at for the Pell Bill tracking, that'd be awesome.
So this is explaining a lot of the question I had earlier?
It is, yeah, if you see the very bottom number, the, the green, it tells you your balance is. We, we go in the hole. We go in the hole in twenty twenty-four and we go in the hole in twenty twenty-five. And that's based off of all those projects that you've got listed there and the expenses. You've got your general expenses there, your fog seal. We've got emergency repairs in here.
So what, I guess, well, my question, I mean, I see where the figures are taking us, but, I guess my question is, is where, where's this money going to come from to balance this out? Because obviously we have these things scheduled for those years, we're in the hole. So where are we going to get the funds to put this back that DOT just robbed us of?
So, good question. We'll either have to eliminate some of these projects or we'll have to do a fund balance appropriation. Or we'll just have to expect some of the growth that we're going to have based off of, for example, keeping the tax rate the same now and earmarking that money to go back into the roads. But, good question. And, and all of the, the projects that we potentially have to pay for are not, like, for example, his, his match for the, the grant that he's got. We've got to match six or seven hundred thousand dollars. And right here, I only have two hundred thousand dollars accounted for. So we've got to come up with that money. These are all, all the projects that we know are going to take place in the next ten years, without, with the exception of not matching that fully.
Well, if we end up going to that point, we need, we need the match money. We may end up having to just physically borrow that.
Yes.
What's going to be the revenue that's coming in from the tax district?
We would still have, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But for those of you there at home, if you look at the very bottom number, the green, that's basically the, the rolling balance of our Pell Bill based off of what projects we have projected over the next ten years. So you'll see the negative four thousand there in twenty-four and the negative one twenty-six in twenty-five. But.
That means we have to work to find that money. These are the, the Joe Carr Road and Marvin Road intersections and Bonds Grove Church and Waxahaw Marvin Road. Those bills will be coming due around twenty-four, twenty-five.
Any questions on that? Any questions on roads and transportation? All right, last sheet, I'm getting to it pretty quickly because y'all have already talked about mostly everything else. You'll have your park salaries listed here. This is at Derek at forty hours a week, so he, he would be full-time at that point. Then you've got two part-time employees and then another two part-time employees. Your health benefits, your insurance benefits, all that stuff is listed there. Fifteen percent increase. The events stayed the same. Everything else stayed the same pretty much with, with Derek's. We did have an increase in gas and vehicle maintenance because we will have a, a vehicle at that point. And the only other exception is you see the forty thousand dollars listed there for park projects. That number comes directly from the CIP plan that we just talked about and approved. And then you'll also see another ten thousand dollar appropriation in the capital project fund, which I want to reiterate, this council is, this has been the first council that's actually done an annual appropriation to that capital project. And that is all, like, that's, that's the gist of everything. We'll talk about in more detail, but is there any questions on any of that? You see the next tab is solid waste. We don't have any numbers in there for that because it's going to be a wash, but we do have to, to put that in when we get those numbers back. Any questions on anything? Nope. Okay, okay. We'll talk about it in the next budget.
Very good.
Any, any desired changes, I guess?
Some things I'll talk to you and discuss and figure out what.
And if y'all want to meet with me individually and talk about any of this, I'm, I'm more than welcome to do so.
Okay.
Now I need to adjourn this meeting.
What's that? Okay, yeah, so I'll need, since we're all done with the budget, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Six thirty-one.
So moved. Six thirty-one, ask for a quick file break before we start our regular meeting. That's okay.
Hi.
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 Motion passes to adjourn and then we're, we didn't open them.